Well, good morning. Welcome to the April 9th Board of Supervisors meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order and we're going to begin with roll call.
Supervisor Brandal?
Here.
Supervisor Mendez?
Here.
Supervisor Quintero?
Here.
Supervisor Pacheco?
Here.
Chairman Magsick?
And I'm here. First item on the agenda is the invocation and pledge of allegiance, which today is going to be led by District 3.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This time I'd like to call up Pastor Darryl Duchaine. Give you a little bit of background before he presents our invocation. He's a native of Fresno, graduated from Roosevelt High School, so he's a rough rider. And then went on to Fresno City College and graduated from Fresno Pacific. Currently employed by Fresno Unified as a project manager. And served as, serving as senior pastor at Faith Worship Center. And as previously, he served under Pastor Paul Binion, Pastor Don Linton, and Pastor J.R. Coleman. And for many of you in the county, if his name sounds familiar, it's because he's married to Linda Duchaine, our newly promoted assistant director in Fresno County's Department of Social Services. And they've been married for almost 33 years, have six adult children and 11 grandchildren. Welcome Pastor, and I've known Pastor when he was with City of Fresno, working in the Parks and Recreation Department and looking for a church. So welcomes.
Thank you Supervisor Quintero for the invitation to come and invite God's presence into your meeting. I always consider it an honor. And just know that I'm praying today, but I'll be praying for you afterwards, amen, because I know someone who's in leadership, it's easy for people to point fingers and make and complain all the time, but they don't know what you have to go through to make the decisions that you make. So you are continually in my prayers, amen. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come before you this hour. First, giving you thanks, honor, and praise for another day you've blessed us to see, another day you've given us life. And we're so grateful for all the many blessings you bestow upon us each and every day. We thank you for your grace and your mercy, for your loving kindness, Father God. Most of all, we thank you for your unconditional love that you bestow upon us each and every hour. And Father, we come before you right now, asking for your presence in this room today, Father, as our leaders have come together to make decisions, Father God, that will affect the Fresno County and the residents of Fresno County, Father. They have an agenda that they've set forward for today. I just pray that you would give them the guidance and the wisdom they need to make the right decisions, Father God. We know that sometimes things can get tough, but Father God, we know with your help, we can do all things. And so I pray, Father, for your presence in helping them to make the right decisions, Father. I pray that you would help them, Father God. Throughout this meeting, your word says that man makes plans in his hearts, but it's you that guides our steps. And I just pray for your guidance and helping them to accomplish all that they desire to do on today. We thank you and we praise you. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Thank you, Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Item number one, approve agenda.
Board members, any modifications to the agenda? And I think item 47, do we want to take that up?
Under item two.
Okay, not a problem. So any modifications to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
We now move to item number two, approve consent agenda, item numbers 23 to 62. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, item 47 is deleted. Item 47 is under Internal Services and it has been deleted. There's a revision to item 61 under Social Services. Exhibit A, Section 1B of the agreement incorrectly referenced Chapter 11.9. The exhibit should have referenced Chapter 11.8. My staff is distributing a revised agreement with the department's explanation of the correction to you now.
All right. Any other items to be pulled off consent from board members? Yes, please Supervisor Quintero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull items 28, 29, 30, and 31. Those four are items that will be adjourned in memory, and I just want to touch a little bit on each of those individuals.
All right, we will pull items 28, 29, 30, and 31. Any other items to be pulled from board members? Hearing seeing none, I'll go out to the public. Anyone in the public wishing to pull any of the consent agenda items? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. And Madam Clerk, when do you want to take up items 28, 29, 30, and 31?
They would follow item number nine, if that's okay with you?
Yep, that's what we'll do. With the public portion closed, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, seeing none, motion carries.
We now move to item number three. Under Board of Supervisors, presentation retirement plaque to Yolanda Dinwiddie, Department of Social Services, 16 years of service.
All right. And as social service workers come forward, Daniel Nieto, I believe, is going, has a presentation in regards to this person who's retiring.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Delvin Baker, Deputy Director, Fresno County Department of Social Services, Child Welfare Branch. Also present is Division Chief Danielle Nieto, our Director Sonia Bougat, and Yolanda Dinwiddie. We would like to thank you for the opportunity in recognizing Yolanda's years of service with the department as she begins her journey into retirement. Danielle does have a few words to say. Thank you.
Good morning. Yolanda, you've been a social worker for the county for 16-plus years. Throughout those years, you have worked in home supportive services, as an intake case manager, assessing clients, managing an integrated caseload of intake and ongoing cases, and assessing clients for services to allow them to stay in their homes. In 2009, you transitioned to child welfare, where you were assigned to emergency response, where you would investigate allegations of child abuse and neglect, not only investigating, but helping families with support and services. As a social worker for child welfare, you also worked in the Resource Family Support Unit, where you helped locate meaningful placements for children in foster care, working with county resource parents, foster family agencies, and short-term residential treatment programs alongside your peer social workers. Additionally, you have worked as an after-hour social worker at nights, weekends, and have even had the pleasure working holidays with you. During those after-hour times, I have seen your tremendous dedication to children and families. You have been instrumental in coaching and mentoring new staff in roles you have held. You have interviewed a countless amount of parents, children, foster parents, and service providers. You have made referrals for services, visited homes, advocated, collaborated, and unified families and found permanent homes for our children. There is no question in my mind that you have always served the needs of our clients. You have served those children and families as well as our agency, and you have done so with humility and grace, and we thank you. Yolanda, throughout your career as a social worker, you have consistently demonstrated unwavering dedication, compassion, and expertise advocating for the most vulnerable members of our community through your work with child welfare as well as IHSS. You exhibited exceptional knowledge and skills, not just in your work, but also in the manner in which you interact with your colleagues and peers. You are a role model to younger social workers and have shown that by training and sharing with them your wisdom and support. Your thorough understanding of complex care dynamics and your approach to problem solving have led to transformative changes in the lives of many families. Yolanda, you leave behind a legacy of integrity, resilience, and commitment to DSS. Your retirement is a monumentous occasion and a tremendous accomplishment. On behalf of your peers, previous supervisors, the leadership team, and the citizens of Fresno, we are profoundly grateful for your excellent service, and we wish you a retirement filled with the same love and warmth you have shared with so many. Yolanda, it has been a joy working with you, and thank you for all your hard work, initiative, positive attitude, and we wish you well into retirement.
Thank you. I just have a few words I want to say with the department. Child welfare services is a very difficult task area, very heartbreaking, and a lot of happiness, too, because it does end up in a lot of joy. I've had a great opportunity to serve many families for the 17 years. I've felt blessed to have leaders. And lots of support. I couldn't have done it without them, without their guidance, without their encouraging words, without their kindness. And I just want to thank everyone for an amazing journey that I've had, and I look forward to hopefully continuing to stay connected with the department. Thank you.
Board members, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Sure.
Yes.
Yolanda, I just want to say thank you for serving the constituents in Fresno County for 16 years. Just a minute ago, you mentioned that the job is difficult and yet sometimes also brings joy. And I'm, we've all just been made aware over the last several years how difficult that job is. So we want to recognize that, and thank you for 16 years of hard work for Fresno County.
Thank you.
And with that, we have some items that we would like to present to you today, and also we would like to have a picture taken with you. Do you have any family members that are here that could?
Here to support me.
I would love to have your whole family come forward to receive these gifts at this time.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your time.
Congratulations.
Well done. Thank you. These are for you. Thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you for your kind words.
Good job today.
We now move to item number four. Under Board of Supervisors, presentation retirement plaque, Gerardo Razzo, Department of Social Services, 31 years of service.
And I believe Deputy Director Josh Hernandez has some things he would like to share.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Josh Hernandez. I'm one of the deputy directors for the Department of Social Services. And today I have the honor and pleasure of being here to recognize Gerardo Razzo for his 31 years, 31 and a half years of service for the county of Fresno. Mr. Razzo started his employment in August 1992 as an admitting interview for a former VMC hospital. Mr. Razzo was never one to shy away from change, though. So in 1996, he became an eligibility worker for DSS in our ongoing services branch, where he assisted clients with continuing their health benefits. Following that, in 2001, he became a job specialist in our Waffle to Work branch, where he was, where he would assist our clients with obtaining employment and providing ancillary services. And in 2007, Mr. Razzo promoted to Social Services Program Supervisor. It is during this time, as a supervisor, he made sure to use his abilities to lead our staff in various areas, including since in our Cal Works ongoing branch, our Combo CalFresh Medical Branch, our contact center, Waffle to Work, and the Employment Resource Center, and he was our department's jobs 2000 liaison. Mr. Razzo was a constant professional, a leader by example, and one of the most genuine persons I have had the pleasure of working with. Thank you, Mr. Gerardo Razzo, for your commitment to the department, to the clients we serve, and to the community.
Thank you.
I just want to briefly add my congratulations and say, as a director, I really do not like March. People retire, but it's a well-deserved retirement. We've had some, we have some awesome staff in our department, and their level of experience and knowledge is really essential when it comes to supporting new staff and supporting our clients, and you're one of those. So congratulation in retirement. And you can, fine. I want to say that out loud, too. Anyway, so thank you for acknowledging our staff who are retiring and who have served this county for a long time.
And Sonia, I believe Department of Social Services is the largest department by both staff as well as budget, and it's important for you to continue to have excellent leaders like the two individuals who have retired today. And I would just invite them, we've got a lot of nonprofits like Boys and Girls Clubs, Big Brothers, Big Sisters out there that are always looking for great people like yourself. So please give nonprofits like that consideration. With that, any board members have any additional comments they'd like to make?
Thank you, Mr. Razzo, for 31 years. We appreciate it.
And Gerardo, oh, go ahead, Sal.
No, what do you plan to do with your time off?
I'm still.
Children?
Training options, so.
All right.
Okay, good for you. It seems like the, getting all these retirees, and they all look too young to retire. Like Ms. Dinwiddie, too.
That's what I say.
Okay. Did you bring any of your family with you today?
My wife.
Okay.
All right. At this time, we would invite you forward to receive some items from us, and please have your wife come forward as well. Congratulations.
We now move to item number five. Under Supervisor Magsick, adopt resolution recognizing the retirement of Dr. Jim Andrews.
Yes, and I believe David Lucchini is here as well. And today is the day where we have many great individuals who are retiring. And David, if you can share with us a little bit more about this individual before we vote on this resolution.
I'll bring up Dan Lynch for the good history on this. But morning, board members. David Lucchini, Director of Public Health. Thank you Supervisor Magsick for sponsoring this item in recognizing Dr. Andrews. I want to bring up Dan Lynch, because both Dan Lynch, our Division Manager and Director of Emergency Medical Services, and Division Manager for Emergency Services have worked together probably 20-plus years, close to 25 years. So these guys have done a lot together overseeing the emergency medical services. So I want to introduce Dan Lynch.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and board members. Dan Lynch, Department of Public Health, Emergency Services. I have the distinct honor to speak in recognition of Dr. Jim Andrews. As David said, this is somewhat personal to me, because Dr. Andrews and I have worked for, together for 28 years, through some good and some bad, and somewhat like a marriage, I guess. Dr. Andrews is a product of our local resident program, where he was trained at Valley Medical Center through the UCSF program. He became part of the EMS Agency in 1995, working as an assistant to Dr. Gene Carlson. Would not be long after that where Dr. Andrews would take over for Dr. Carlson and fill the role of the EMS Medical Director for the next 26 or 27 years. It really is unheard of for a medical director to stick around for so long. But Dr. Andrews has been a committed partner in our local EMS system. That serves not only Fresno County, but also the counties of Madera, Kings, and Tulare, where a four-county EMS agency. One single statement that describes his work, his medical leadership has saved lives. Through collaboration with hospitals and providers, he has maintained our patient treatment protocols for EMTs and paramedics at the highest levels, keeping them up to date with the latest and greatest medical research. He has authorized the certification of thousands of EMTs, paramedics, dispatchers, nurses, base hospital physicians. Dr. Andrews is here today. I wish he was here with his wife, Julie. Yes, he is married to Julie Andrews, and I often bring that up. But I wanted to thank Julie publicly, because over the years, she has endured countless interruptions at night, weekends, and some vacations, and she's had to endure Dr. Andrews himself. So on behalf of the EMS Agency and the four-county EMS system, we thank Dr. Andrews for his service to our communities.
You have to talk.
Well, I didn't, I didn't expect to have to say anything. I'm happy to be here. Thank you for this recognition. But I also want to say, as Mr. Lynch alluded to, that there are a lot of other people involved in making an outstanding EMS system besides just the medical director. There's the EMS Agency, which has given me countless support over the years, and I certainly couldn't, couldn't have done it without them. And then there are provider agencies, where the EMTs and medics who actually do the real work in the streets, they deserve some recognition, along with our hospitals that participate, to really make this an integrated system, which is why I think truly, even here in central California, we probably have one of the best EMS systems in the United States. And I think everyone deserves recognition for that. And I guess that's, oh, and then I guess I should thank my wife, who's, who's not here, because she's with my son down at the DMV, who's taking his driving test. So I'm looking forward to my next insurance bill. And my other son's in school. So thank you very much.
Board members, you have any comments? I'll just say, yeah, thank you, Dr. Andrews. I also want to say I've been scooped off the side of the road a couple of times and experienced the beautiful inside of ambulance, and so have some of my friends. So really appreciate what you've done. So thank you for making such a long career here in Fresno County, and I hope that you choose to retire here, stay here as well. So with that, if you can come forward, we have a resolution, and I'm going to ask for a motion for approval. Is there a second? Motion a second. Any further comments? Not seeing any. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations, well-deserved retirement.
We now move to item number six. Under Vice Chairman Mendez, present certificates of recognition to the Cruthers High School Girls Basketball Team for winning the Division III State Basketball Championship.
Okay, this is a presentation of certificates of recognition to the Cruthers Girls Basketball Team, Division III State Champions. The Cruthers High School Girls Basketball Program made a little history as the Blue Raiders beat Granada Hills Charter 54 to 48 in the Division III State Championship game at the Golden One Center in Sacramento. The NorCal 14th seed Blue Raiders were already the lowest seeded girls team to ever make it to Sacramento. And with the win, they also became the lowest seeded girls team ever to win a state championship. Cruthers had it, had to win every single game away from home in order to win the program's second ever state title. They also won the Division V title in 2019. I just want to say that's a big deal, because they're a Division V team that won the Division III. The Blue Raiders played all games on the road, beat number three seed, number 11 seed, number two seed Central in the regional semifinals, and the number one seed, University San Francisco, before capping off their run with the win against SoCal number five seed Granada Hills Charter. The other honors have followed the team after the state championship game. It's a rare occurrence when a head coach from a team other than a open division or Division I is named State Coach of the Year. Since the state CIF went to competitive equity, which I think is, I won't say, for seeding the state basketball championships and established the open division in 2013, only one coach not in the open or Division II divisions have won the award. That all changed this year when Anna Almeida of the CIF, Division III State Championship Cruthers, was named the 2024 Cal High Sports State Coach of the Year. Coach Almeida also named the Central Section Coach of the Year and the Fresno B Coach of the Year.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank you guys for allowing us to come up here and be presented with these certificates. We appreciate Cruthers for allowing us to represent them at the state level. I'd like to thank my coaches who have been with us, the countless fans near and far that have supported us, the girls who have attended practice day after day, week after week, month after month for years, to put us in the position to play in the Division III State Championship. Without their countless hours and effort, we would not be in the situation that we're in. So I'd like to thank them and their parents for all allowing us to do that. I'm in my 19th year at Cruthers, and I look forward to staying around for a few more years and hopefully continue to represent the community in such a great and high level. Again, we want to thank you guys for letting us be here, and I think that's all I have.
Thank you very much. And, you know, we're all proud of you and proud of the girls. I found out, or Brian found out yesterday when he was signing certificates, that we're both friends of Larry Trugaro, so. So we thought that was pretty interesting. So again, congratulations. And if you want to bring the girls up for a picture and...
And all of the girls have been given individual certificates, so those have been passed out, just for your information.
Congratulations, good job.
Well done. Congratulations.
What position did you play?
Huh? Great work.
Everywhere? Okay.
Thank you. Well done.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Guard, okay.
Congratulations.
What position? I figured.
Good job. Great work.
What position?
Congratulations.
Yeah, I had to think about it.
Great job. Thank you, Coach. Well done. Well done, Coach. Then you played everywhere. Thank you, Coach.
We now move to item number seven. Under Supervisor Brandal, proclaim April as Fair Housing Month.
All right. Let the girls sit down for a second. Today, I'd like to commemorate the passage of the Fair Housing Act, which was done in 1968. And I'm going to say a few comments about that, but I'd like to invite up all of our friends from the many Realtor associations here in Fresno County. We've got a number of them represented today. I think we're going to have Gary speak, and Wendellin, and Ayesha, and maybe a few others. So we've got a good crowd today. But I want to talk for a few minutes about the Fair Housing Act. Go ahead and just crowd up there around the podium. The Fair Housing Act was enacted on April 11, 1968. It was enshrined into federal law, the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. The Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and disability. And here in Fresno County, we're committed to fighting that. And we appreciate the members of our local Realtors to come forward and be very supportive of this proclamation today. I think we need to take a vote, but I would love to hear from some of the folks that are so passionate about making sure that we have fair housing in our community. So Gary, if you could start us off, and anybody else that would like to share?
Thank you very much for those kind words, Supervisor Brandow. Chairman Mazzig, thank you very much for the support. The county of Fresno, we really, I can't say more than words can express how much Fair Housing Month and this really proclamation means to us, the Fresno Association of Realtors, and you see the diverse faces up here. We represent our members, the community that we serve, and then also, lastly, I want each individual to speak on their different organization, to really express how diverse that we are at the association, not just in Fresno County, but throughout the state of California.
Hello, good morning. My name is Ayesha Allen, and I am president and co-founder of Realtors of Fresno County. We provide education to the African-American community, financial literacy, and down payment assistance programs, so we can help assist them. And I'm grateful and honored to be a part and alongside of each one of these folks who represent different organizations that do the same thing for their communities.
Hi, good morning. My name is Wendellin Rodriguez. I am the president-elect, representing Women's Council of Realtors, Greater Fresno, and I just want to thank you for inviting us and for this proclamation today. We greatly appreciate it.
Good morning. Juan Sanchez, vice president of the National Association of Hispanic Professionals here in Fresno, and I've actually had the privilege of doing a lot of mortgage assistance programs, including the one that Fresno passed, which was a $100,000 forgivable grant. We took advantage of that, we depleted it, so we need more of it. Thank you.
That's why his name is Juan in a million.
Good morning. Juan Sanchez, vice president of the National Association of Hispanic Professionals here in Fresno, and I've actually had the privilege of doing a lot of mortgage assistance programs, including the one that Fresno passed, which was a $100,000 forgivable grant. We took advantage of that, we depleted it, so we need more of it. Thank you.
That's why his name is Juan in a million.
Good morning. My name is Mario Quinones. I'm the current president for NAREP Fresno Chapter, and we thank you all for letting us be here and represent our community.
Hi, my name is Mirtina Garcia, and I am the Regional California National Association of Hispanic Real Estate Professionals Board of Corporate, and I'm here to support everybody that's here. Affordable housing is an issue, and I hope that you will continue to do what it takes to take care of our community, because the homeless population is increasing, and it breaks my heart every day. So I hope that you help our community and help all our members here, who are here representing different organizations. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Stevens, and I'm here on behalf of Women's Council, Greater Fresno, also. I am the current events director, and I'm also part of the diversity committee, along with some other committees within the Fresno Association. And I just want to say thank you again for all you're doing. We've got a big hill ahead of us, but we've got an amazing team with the association, and we appreciate that you at the county level are willing to partner with us, because it's going to take a team effort for us to overcome the issues. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Bob Voss. I am the chapter president for Veterans Association of Real Estate Professionals. Our focus is helping veterans get into home loans using it. I retired from doing home loans about two years ago, along with some of these other retired people, but I did it for twenty-nine years, and I've seen where we've gone, from where I started doing loans in ninety-three to where we're at now. We've made strides, there's still stuff to do, though.
Good morning. My name is Des Marie Hedrick. I'm the chief executive officer for the Fresno Association of Realtors, and I would also like to say thank you for your continued support and for your partnership, so we greatly appreciate that, for allowing all of these great people around me to do what they do to ensure that the dream of homeownership exists for all, you know, within our state. So thank you so much.
All right. Well, Gary, thank you for having everybody introduce themselves, and this is such an important thing for us to do today. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to proclaim April as Fair Housing Month in Fresno County.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
We have a motion in a second. Anyone in the public wishing to comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And it passes unanimously. And if all of you could come forward, we'll give you this proclamation, get a picture, and we thank you for being here.
Yeah. Good to see you. Yes, thank you for coming. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Thank you for coming today. All right, you did a great job. Yes. Good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought it was kind of quiet. You didn't bring Scordino with you, huh?
Just good to see you, my friend.
Well done. You like that, huh? Good morning. That's all right. That's all right. Yeah, that's good. It's quiet. Good morning. Good to see you.
Good morning. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I thought it was kind of quiet. You didn't bring Scordino with you, huh?
Just good to see you, my friend.
Well done. You like that, huh? Good morning. That's all right. That's all right. Yeah, that's good. It's quiet. Good morning. Good to see you.
Good morning. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
We now move to item number eight. Under Supervisor Pacheco, proclaim April 11th through 17th, 2024, the Black Maternal Health Week in the county of Fresno.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If the group could come forward. It's my pleasure to proclaim April 11th through 17th, Black Maternal Health Week in Fresno County. This proclamation brings awareness to our community about the benefits and importance of healthy mothers and babies, and the ways in which we can work together to achieve healthy starts for everyone. Here today to accept the proclamation is Dr. Vanise Curry, on behalf of the Black Wellness and Prosperity Center. Welcome to the board.
Thank you, and good morning. I'm going to pass the microphone to Tosh first, and then I'll speak just briefly afterward.
Good morning, and thank you for having us, chairman and board of supervisors. We want to thank you for your support, and I just want to tell you a little bit about Black Maternal Health Week and how important it is to us. So, Black Maternal Health Week is a national week of awareness. Thank you. Activism and community building. It's intended to build, and there are five pillars that it's set upon. It's intended to build a national conversation about Black maternal health, amplify community-driven policy, center voices of Black mamas and families and stakeholders, provide a national platform for Black-led efforts in maternal health and birth reproductive justice, and enhance community organizing of Black maternal health. We are, we do have several events throughout the week. We just had one last week, which was our art exhibit, to share with the community about the history of, you know, Black maternal health, including Fresno County. And we also have a Jubilee this Saturday, so we're inviting you all to come and check it out. It's going to be big, and I mean big. So please invite your families and come out and have fun with us. And we're, one of our most important events is Monday, April 15th, where we invite stakeholders, administrators from the hospital, community members, to talk about their experiences, but all in all, to work together to try to prevent these preventable outcomes, eliminate these preventable outcomes of death and morbidity amongst our moms and our babies. So please, we want to say thank you, and we want to invite you to come out and share this moment with us.
I just want to say thank you. It's been such a pleasure to work in this space. I'm a graduate of Fresno State and a doula, so I get to serve in a multitude of different capacities, and to see the work that happens behind the scenes, which sometimes a lot of families, including myself, were unaware of. It's really great to see how everyone's working together and taking this effort seriously and just propelling it forward, so thank you so much.
So, Chairman Mazzig and board supervisors, thank you again for recognizing the importance of this week and the work that is going on. I want to just highlight a few things, and that is, what you see is a really strong collaboration that really spans the life cycle. And so we have folks here that work on preconception health, making sure that our environments are safe, that they provide the most nurturing space that is possible. We have folks at work while people are pregnant. We have research that is ongoing, that really seeks to look at what are the best practices for individualized care and group care. We have evidence-based group models that have been in existence and have been shown to be effective. And so the work that continues is really a collaboration. It is a coalition of folks who consistently demonstrate conviction and commitment and courage, because it is a challenge for these moms and for our participants and for our community, honestly, to face the realization that moms lost during childbirth, infants lost before one year of life. Many of them are preventable. Eighty percent of the deaths of Black moms are preventable. And what that means is that there is so much work to be done, and that is why the coalition, the idea of working across different disciplines with different organizations and different CBOs, has been successful, but really does require your consistent support. So we do appreciate that support, and we always are going to ask for that continued support to make sure that moms are making it through childbirth, that they are safely delivering infants. That is the only way that the Fresno County infant mortality and preterm birth rates will ever decrease, is if we start with the most impacted community, and if you look at your stats, you know that that is African-American women. Not because they are not doing everything possible to secure healthy outcomes, but the American Medical Association has identified racism as a public health threat, and what we see is that it shows up in the doctor's office, it shows up in the standard of care or the lack of standard of care, and it shows up on our stats when we look at who is most impacted, who has the most number of moms that die in childbirth, who has the most number of infants that don't make it to the first year. So we are in this week of celebration, but we are also heavy-hearted, because we all know people that have lost a loved one, or an infant, or a friend. In a time and place when there should be joy, there has been sorrow. So we appreciate your support. We continue to advocate for our moms, whether or not it's at Black Infant Health, where they work individually and collectively, whether or not it's research projects like the Embrace Study, a coalition between Central Valley Health Policy Institute and UCSF and First Five, whether or not it's with policy and advocacy and research. We're doing all of these things because we recognize that it won't be one single thing that increases the healthy outcomes, it will be a multitude. And so for that multitude, we need continued support. So thank you again.
Dr. Curry, thank you once again for all that you do. I see you have our first five representatives here, too, our executive director, as well as my fellow commissioner. So, Mr. Chairman, it's my pleasure, I'd like to make a motion to proclaim, once again, April 11th through 17th, Black Maternal Health Week in the county of Fresno.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
We're going to take Brandow's second. We have a motion in a second. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? And that passes unanimously. Please step forward and receive this proclamation, and we would like to get a picture with you. Thank you. Thank you.
Please say hi to Mary for me. Thank you. Good to see you.
Doctor, what a pleasure. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was a pleasure riding with you in the elevator. Good to see you again. Thanks for being here.
Good to see you.
Thank you for being here.
Good job. Good job.
We now move to item number nine. Under Supervisor Quintero, proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Today, we'd like to proclaim Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I'd like to acknowledge and thank the organization, Centro La Familia. I'd like to introduce Margarita Rocha, the executive director, Martin Rodriguez, and Chin Bang as your victim services team. Before you begin, Margarita, I'd like to just read a couple of sentences from the proclamation. Basically, it really highlights the work that Centro La Familia does out in the community to address this serious issue. And it states that "Sexual assault is any crime involving unwanted, forced, or coerced sexual contact and can be committed by a stranger or someone that the victim knows, such as a friend, relative, or acquaintance." And in terms of the work that Centro La Familia does, is a local community-based nonprofit that provides a full range of services to victims of assault, including helping with reporting crimes to law enforcement, filing requests for restraining orders, assisting with humanitarian relief, educating victims about the criminal justice system, and providing referrals for counseling, among other resources. So I know your hands are really full with the problems that we have in our community, and with that, I'll turn the microphone over to you.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board of supervisors, and thank you, Mr. Quintero. I appreciate the recognition today on behalf of my staff and our board of directors. It is a very, very serious crime, and we see it more than we'd want to, and the way that sometimes we identify a victim of sexual assault comes through domestic violence and human trafficking. These are the three top issues that the staff present here today handles on a daily basis. So, on their behalf, I appreciate the recognition from the board of supervisors, because as some of the previous presenters also spoke about heavy issues in our community, this is another one. And my staff, at the end of the day, has had a full day with dealing with folks who have been victimized. And I'm going to turn it over to Martine Rodriguez, who is a supervisor of the department, to give you a little more detail on how they do their advocacy work.
Thank you, and thank you, board of supervisors. Thank you, Mr. Quintero, for sponsoring our proclamation. A lot of the work that we do, as Margarita was saying, is not easy, but I have the team here, most of the team here, and we, more than anything, provide crisis intervention. We make sure that survivors that walk in through our door are being seen and heard. We make sure, our goal is to give them back their voice and make them feel empowered, because once a victim is no longer a victim and they become a survivor, then they will have their story to tell to others, and then hopefully empower others to come forward and report such crime. A little background, as you mentioned, we do provide assistance with restraining orders, court accompaniment, educating victims about the criminal justice system, and for those that are non-citizen, we do offer humanitarian relief through, like, the UVisa, TVSA, or VAWA, and most importantly, assist also with helping them report to law enforcement, because most of the time, they are scared to report, because they believe that there's ties to ICE. And so... And so, our goal is to educate them that there is no ties and just informing them that they're there to be protected as well. And so, thank you once again. We appreciate everything.
And also, the numbers are staggering in Fresno County. It states here that more than one in three women and nearly one in four men experience some kind of sexual violence involving physical contact. So, it's an emotional roller coaster that you have to deal with, and a lot of those emotions are taken home by your staff as well because they get so involved with trying to help people. So, really applaud the organization for the wonderful work they've done.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Please step forward so we can give you this proclamation. Thank you. Thank you.
You're our boss.
Always good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we now take up the items from consent that were pulled by Supervisor Quintero, item 28, 29, 30, 31. Each one of these are adjourned in memory of a special individual. You may take it up as one motion or individually, however the board wishes to do that.
Altogether?
Altogether, yes.
We will take it up as one motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to highlight four people that I look up to in our community that helped continue to keep working to make Fresno a better place to be, and I just wanted to highlight them a little bit and what they've done in terms of Fresno County. We've adjourned in memory of all of them today. The first one is Mr. Fraylin Ramirez, whose career was with EDD, and he worked a lot with the farm labor contractors and farmers out in the rural areas when the harvesting season came around. But the more important part is that the farm workers that he worked with, he continued to help them even after the season was over to apply for citizenship and be able to continue their work here in the United States. And his work is archived in Washington, DC for all the work that he's done. The other one is Dr. Leroy Lebof, who had, for many years, a practice on Kings Canyon, and he was a veterinarian. And he served... He had his office there well into his 90s and continued, even after he retired, to spay and neuter pets for children. And that was as a community service and was very involved on a lot of the design of Kings Canyon Boulevard. When I served on the city council, he was very helpful and always a big advocate for southeast Fresno. Also, I'd like to mention a local artist who helped start, was one of the founders of the art hop. His name was Chris Sorenson, passed away recently. And he had a warehouse in the industrial area that he rented from the Cagliari family and had a lot of artists working there, renting spaces, and just had a lot of activities there. And he called it his playground and always opened doors for everybody, and it's just a beautiful place to go visit and visit with Chris. He's going to be sorely missed. And the last one is a lady by the name of Jane Worsley. Met Jane in the 1980s. She was involved with different organizations in the community and had a friend of hers that wrote up a little paragraph that she wanted me to read in memory of Jane. She'll be sorely missed. Her husband also has, I believe, one of the schools at the juvenile justice, named after him, it's Paul Worsley. Says, "We first met Jane more than 20 years ago, when my husband and I came to Fresno from Connecticut. She befriended us and became our mentor. Over the years, we exchanged problems and joys, bonded over children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. She was a supporter and worked hard for so many wonderful parts of Fresno, including the reading program at Stone Soup, Friends of the Library, Board of the Saroyan Town Hall Lecture Series. We knew her best through League of Women Voters, where she was president from 1979 to 1981, and was on the board for many years as treasurer and many other positions. Jane was a true blessing for Fresno and in our lives for more than two decades." And the people that I just mentioned are people that really helped a lot in contributing to the betterment of Fresno County, never gave up and just really believed that the part that they played in Fresno was just to make it better. So, I appreciate the time, and with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the adjourned memories.
We have a motion for items 28, 29, 30, 31. Is there a second? We have a second. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on these items? Seeing none, I'll...
One last thing, I'm sorry, I failed to mention Chris Sorenson. He worked with Steel and Metal, and his nickname was the Man of Steel.
Seeing no public comment, I'll close the public portion. Oh, yes.
This just... My name is Tammy McMahon-Gorins. Chris Sorenson was our neighbor, and he fell down. We have a neighborhood watch, and he fell down, and he was on the cement. And my husband, who's a skateboarder, hopped the fence and rescued him and lifted him up and just lovely, lovely, lovely man gifted us one of his art pieces and just a lovely man and a lovely family as well that cared for him. And I just wanted to say that, it was such a cool story, that he hopped the fence because he skateboards and got him on his feet. It was just real precious. Thank you for letting me share.
He was a great friend. Yes, thank you.
I'll close the public portion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous.
We now move to the regular agenda item, item 10, under County Clerk/Register of Voters, receive the certified statement of vote for the March 5th, 2024 Consolidated Presidential Primary Election.
Good morning, Chairman Masig and Supervisors. I am James Koos, your County Clerk/Register of Voters. I'm here today to report on the successful certification of the March 5th, 2024 Consolidated Presidential Primary Election. On January 9th of this year, the County Clerk/Register of Voters Department came to this board for permission to consolidate the March 5th election. As we do with all elections, where a local jurisdiction wishes to receive election services in conjunction with other jurisdictions. On March 29th, 2024, we provided official certification of the March 5th election results to the California Secretary of State, those certified results being an attachment to this board item. I respectfully request that the board declares the results of this election for these contests and measures under the board's jurisdiction per California Election Code Section 15400. Over 156,000 voters cast ballots in Fresno County this election, a turnout of 30.84%. This percentage turnout is lower than in most recent presidential primaries in the county, but not the lowest turnout this century. Fresno County and the state as a whole has had strong registration growth over the past 20 years, which lowers percentage participation when ballots cast do not match the registration growth, even when the absolute number of ballots cast is consistent with past elections. 16,500 voters received assistance at Fresno County Vote Centers this election, approximately 10.5% of all voters. And another 16,400 vote-by-mail ballots were dropped off at vote centers. 25,500, roughly 77% of those visits occurred on Election Day, March 5th. Most vote centers reported lines during the evening rush on Election Day, but no vote center had more than a handful of voters at the close of polls at 8:00 PM. We expect a much stronger turnout in November for the presidential general election, and voters should be planning now to take advantage of vote-by-mail and early in-person voting days to avoid lines at vote centers on Election Day. Along with increased staffing at vote centers, the County Clerk Elections Division will be emphasizing voter preparation in all November 2024 election communications. The 1% manual tally was conducted for the March 5th, 2024 Presidential Primary Election per Election Code Section 15360A2. Random samples of vote-by-mail ballots and ballots voted in person were drawn by members of the public on the morning of March 7th. The in-person ballot random selection represented 6.6% of the eligible sample. The vote-by-mail random selection represented 5.6% of the eligible sample. No tabulation errors were found in either randomly selected sample of ballots. One adjudication disagreement was identified with an ambiguous mark on a vote-by-mail ballot being ruled by the manual tally team to be a vote for a candidate rather than an undervote. This ballot was readjudicated to match the tally team's findings. The manual tally process was completed on March 18th and was directly followed by the vote center canvas, which continued until the afternoon of March 29th. At a recent board meeting, a member of the community highlighted the ever-growing complexity of elections in Fresno County and California. I can't agree more, and I believe our transition to the California Voters Choice Act process has served us well in preparing for the growing complexity issue. We were ready for when the state transitioned to 100% vote-by-mail. We were ready for when the state required same-day registration at all voting locations. In this election, we were ready to implement live vote-by-mail processing at all voting locations. We rolled out this functionality quietly this election, focusing on training and process implementation rather than advertisement, to avoid vote center and voter and staff confusion. And I think we successfully avoided any cattywampus situations because of this approach. Over 1,500 voters made use of the system for the March 5th election, and I expect that number to go up significantly with education and outreach prior to the November 5th general election. This process will significantly reduce the amount of time a voter spends voting at the vote center and will reduce the number of ballots required to be printed at vote centers. The initial distribution of vote-by-mail ballots was not without its hiccups, but was smoother than the presidential primary in 2020, and will take lessons learned in public feedback forward to make the 2028 process even smoother. As a presidential primary, we had 10 different party-specific ballot types, and the March 5th ballot matched the longest physical ballot in Fresno County history, driven by the candidate-rich double US Senate race, local central committee races, and several county-wide measures. Combined, these two factors also contributed to make the County Voter Information Guide the longest in county history. While we won't have party-specific ballot styles in November, we do expect a dozen state propositions, which, when combined with all of our local jurisdictions holding regularly-scheduled elections, may force Fresno County to a two-card ballot for the first time in the modern era. While we have certified the results of the March 5th Presidential Primary Election, we do have one major election activity still ongoing for this election, a recount in the City of Orange Cove's Measure O. A manual recount of the 538 ballots cast in the jurisdiction will occur tomorrow, Wednesday, April 10th, beginning at 9:00 AM at the Fresno County Elections Warehouse. The recount processes are open to observation by the public. Due to the small relative number of ballots, I expect the manual portion of the recount to be completed by the end of day tomorrow, but associated activities might continue into Thursday morning. While we were conducting the March 5th election, we also conducted a special primary election in Congressional District 20 on March 19th. This special election was certified on March 28th, and the results require a special general election in the Congressional District to be held on May 21st. The first ballots for that special election have already been distributed to our military and overseas voters. 35,800 voters participated in the special primary election, a turnout of 28.79%, with many returning their ballots at the same time as they returned their presidential primary ballots. Because of the relatively smaller number of in-person voters in the special primary election, a 100% manual tally of all in-person ballots, as well as a 1.5% random sample tally of vote-by-mail ballots, was conducted. Zero tabulation or adjudication errors were identified during this manual tally. Lastly, I must present the results of Measure A, the County of Fresno Charter Amendment Section 15. 80,088 ballots were cast in favor of Measure A, out of 145,825 total votes for the measure. There were 10,600 undervotes and overvotes. The measure passes with 54.92% of the votes cast. I respectfully request that the board approve, the Chairman of the Board and Clerk of the Board, to sign certifications pursuant to California Government Code Section 23713. These certifications will be transmitted to the County Recorder and the California Secretary of State, along with supporting documentation required by Government Code Section 23713. While ratified by the voters of Fresno County, the charter amendment does not take effect until the certification required by the Government Code Section 23713 is filed by the Secretary of State. I'd like to thank the board for its patience and for its ongoing support, and would be happy to take any questions at this time.
Board members, any questions for staff? Supervisor Brandau.
James, I appreciate the update and certainly ready to certify the statement of vote, and great job. You had multiple balls in the air this time with these several different elections. So, I think you did a great job. I want to say thank you for working in the word "cattywampus" in your presentation this morning. And what was really stood out, as I was listening, was this... There were zero tabulation errors in the samples, and the samples were drawn by the public, is that right? So, that's very interesting. I'd love for us to be able to get that information out. I do want to ask you, unrelated to this certification, but several months ago Supervisor Mendez talked about bringing forward some help in your department to help clean out the voter rolls, and we got a lot of support from the Board of Supervisors, and I believe you've been working on that. When are we going to hear more about that?
So, it takes a little while to get a board item in front of you sometimes, but working with the CAO's office, we do have that item being prepared right now. So, we'll work with the CAOs for budget purposes and with the HR department because this will be adding a new position, and so, there's a little bit... But it is an active item moving. I don't think we're going to make next meeting, which I know we were hoping to try and do in April, but it's coming up, and I'd want it on next meeting, but I don't think we're going to quite make that.
So, pretty quick, though?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I'll just add a quick comment. It's at your board's discretion, so, you know, we can... We will do whatever your board desires, so we can make that occur.
Any other comments? Comments? Yes.
James, good job. I got a question. Did you get any calls or concerns from any of the folks that were registered to vote that received their ballots under a different party affiliation?
So, this was a presidential primary election, and party was...
So this was a presidential primary election, and party was a very important part of this process. Your ballot was party-specific. And we did send out a postcard about four months ahead of time and began processing at that time. And we did have some voters who did change their party registration, and we didn't get that process in time to make the first mailing. It is our goal, whenever there's a change in registration, and for this election that includes party registration, to update that and have that be a behind-the-scenes process, where we can make that update and pull the voters' out-of-date ballot before it ever gets mailed. But we begin processing ballots almost 70 days before the election, solid two months before the election. So any changes around that time sometimes don't make it in. And that issue is magnified during presidential primary. It was much smaller this year than it was four years ago. I shouldn't take all the credit for that. The DMV finally got their head out of wherever it was four years ago, and so that process went much more smoothly this time. But yes, we did receive complaints from voters, and we receive complaints every election. We received complaints during the special election as well.
I spoke with some voters that said, "I got my information, but I've been registered this party for years, and all of a sudden, I'm a different party."
Ah, so we did have an issue, and it is slightly ongoing right now, that there is a party, which we'll name nameless, because it doesn't have a, it doesn't really have a name, that is actually looking to qualify in California as a registered party and had a significant voter registration drive present in Fresno County for the whole first quarter of the year. And a lot of people signed what they thought were petitions in support of this party, when in actuality, they were being signed up to register for that party, which meant that many voters, quite a few voters, and we see many complaints about this, who had been longtime registered Republicans or Democrats, suddenly received a no-party preference because they were now registered for a party that wasn't, isn't currently recognized by the state of California.
Yeah, and these were folks that had been registered for years and said, "Wow, I don't know what happened here."
Yeah.
So they probably signed some paper.
Yes, that was a separate issue that we had that was going concurrent with these elections. Unfortunate, something that we've reached out to the Secretary of State to make a complaint about how this, or at least how some local consultants or contractors for the party have operated.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering what the clarification was on that, because I...
Whenever we have received a complaint from a voter, or a voter has indicated that they did not intend to reregister, because we have reached out when registrations were incomplete, and we have received feedback from those voters that, "I didn't intend to reregister, I was just signing a petition." We have not gone through that, or we reverted whenever possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from members?
Just again to highlight, I want to thank James Koos and his team. I know that, I think the law requires us, when it comes to canvassing, to do a 1% canvas. And what I heard you say in the presidential primary, you went five-fold and even six-fold of what the law requires, because I know that there has been concerns about the type of equipment we use, and I really appreciate you going above and beyond with the processes, the canvassing, just to demonstrate that if there are issues, we are interested in finding them. And to date, we have not had, we have not had issues when it comes to the manual count as well as the machine count. So I really appreciate you being transparent and going above and beyond when it comes to the canvassing. So with that, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item, please step forward.
One of our random sample drawers here.
Me and my dad. Okay. Hello, my name is Sean Berdine. I've spent a colossal amount of time, of my own personal time, researching our elections and observing the process firsthand. I give detailed presentations on this topic, but this will be extremely condensed. For clarity, I am making no personal accusations or insinuations of malfeasance in our county. All full-time staff I've interacted with have been very professional and courteous. My issue is simply with the vote by mail system. The vote by mail system is a problem. It needs to go. Many states and countries have already come to this conclusion and moved back away from it. They all concluded the same thing. There is no true election integrity with vote by mail. It is impossible. I understand that individuals will insist there is, but that's simply not true. People know it's not true. People overwhelmingly want voter ID and in-person voting because it's necessary for true election integrity. In a recent Pew Research poll, 81% of respondents wanted ID to be required. 81% want ID. You remove the ID and in-person voting, and you remove the standard. As long as a name exists in a database, it can have a vote associated with it. Individuals have insisted the signature verification is more than satisfactory. It's not. It's not even close. California code assumes the signature belongs to the voter, and it does not verify, it compares. It is a comparison, not a verification, and it is assumed to be correct in the interest of the voter. We are guaranteed to have an incredibly high success rate. It's like when the superintendent of Fresno Unified starts talking about graduation rates. Of course, everyone passes when there are no longer any standards. It's the same. There are no longer any standards. Furthermore, we cannot fully trust the mail because the mail makes mistakes. We all know it does. Every adult has had issues with the mail. We can't trust the drop boxes because things can happen to drop boxes. I know there are reports of vandalism and damaged ballots across the country. I've read reports and seen the damages. We know this to be true, which is why voter confidence is still continuing to drop. People do not trust this system, and rightfully so. And I know individuals will attempt to focus on certain specific details or metrics to prove integrity, like the 1% manual canvas, but it misses the forest for very small trees. What needs to happen is people in counties need to push back and say, "We are done with this. This was pushed on us during COVID. Those conditions do not exist anymore." Counties, states, and countries are saying, "We're done." We need to do the same. And we will not have true election integrity again until that happens. And with my remaining time, I would like to thank Mr. Koos and the entire Elections Office for the amount of work that they do on this. I cannot express how much respect I actually have for them, for the amount of effort that they do put in, and they welcome me in there and allow me to watch as much as I possibly can. I stay till the end of election night. Tremendous people. Nothing against them. It's the vote by mail system. It's the problem. We need to get rid of it. Thank you for your time.
Seeing no further public comment, I will close the public portion. And Sean, thank you for your comments. Always appreciate that. And also your activism and willingness to volunteer during the election process, that is very important to us. So thank you. With that, this is an action item. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Passes unanimously.
We now move to item number 11, under Behavioral Health. Receive the President County Behavioral Health Board Annual Report for 2023.
I know I'm probably seen early since I was here six months ago, but actually, we are now back on track. A good portion of our time has been to get things in our own house in order for the Behavioral Health Board, since we had those transitions with two chairs. So this past year has been focused primarily on educating members on the various legislative bills that culminated in the passage of Proposition 1, and educating new members, the public attending our meetings, and longstanding members of mental health financing in Fresno County, including CalAim payment reform. The Board now has a good, basic understanding of the financing of moderate to severe mental health illness, and better understands how mild to moderate needs are addressed through the health plans. The entire continuum of behavioral health is the responsibility of the Behavioral Health Board, even though we are primarily working with the Department of Behavioral Health on the severe to moderate. With Proposition 1 passing, we know that the planning period to implement has just begun. We do anticipate that there could be changes to the Behavioral Health Board required positions coming up, but they're not finalized yet, and more to come on that. Supervisor Mendez, I may be coming to visit you specifically because we would really like to have a member from your district on our Board, and we need some representation, and I hope that we can figure out a creative way to make that happen. Our recommendations remain the same as last year. We know that there have been recruitment and retention efforts for behavioral health professionals, and recommend it continue. We know that permanent supportive housing efforts have continued, and our Board is visiting the first one opened here in the county with less restrictive criteria this month. This continues as a recommendation, knowing it takes time, funds, and continued attention. We support DBH and its partners to collaborate on integrating messaging and outreach across the behavioral health continuum for access to services. It's an ongoing effort because we know people don't pay attention until they suddenly need help. Continue to work to establish substance use disorder treatment programs for individuals with severe mental illness will be an ongoing recommendation as well. I would also like to specifically thank Supervisor Quintero for his involvement and support this past year as a Board member. We definitely appreciate your assistance when it's needed. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Board members, please.
I've got one question for clarification from Susan, if that's all right.
Sure.
Susan, one of the things that we've talked about at the meetings and the Board has been supportive about is the housing that we've been able to provide for folks with behavioral issues and mental health issues. Would you be able to kind of share some of the numbers on the housing end of it with the Board and the public?
Yes, thank you, Supervisor. We've been very assertive as a county, more so than many of my colleagues across the state in pursuing "No Place Like Home" funding, which is dedicated funding that we can apply for. There was a non-competitive allocation, but more so competitive grant allocations that we've been successful in applying for. And we've increased our inventory of housing to nearly 600 units here in our county that are dedicated to individuals with behavioral health needs. We also were the first county to lift up and fully execute the Behavioral Health Bridge Housing, which was allocated as the only housing referenced in the CARE Act. Fresno County, of course, like the rest of Cohort 2 counties, will go live with the CARE Act in December of this year. We also support the Behavioral Health Board's recommendation to prioritize housing units where possible for those who don't require the HUD definition of chronic homelessness, because many individuals served by the Department of Behavioral Health have great needs, but they are also really resilient, and so they are able to sometimes have housing resources that we do not consider to be appropriate housing and actually put them at great risk, but it precludes them from meeting the federal definition of homeless.
Okay. And one of the housing centers that opened up recently was the old Arthur's Toys on Blackstone Avenue by Blackstone and Shields, and the name of the complex is called The Arthur because it was Arthur's Toys. But I believe it's 41 units, and 19 of those are for behavioral health clients. So there, I mean, it's just a great job that's going on. That was in partnership with the Housing Authority, and I got to tell you, it's a very good working Behavioral Health Board. Brooke, you're doing a good job as Chair, so I want to thank you for that. It's a very active Board, asking a lot of questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Supervisor Quintero, since you brought up the Arthur project, I believe the Department of Behavioral Health was the number-one contributor when looking at government entities. We contributed 15 million, over 15 million, 15.5, 15.6 million just at that project alone, including wraparound services for 20 years, and that is the most expensive component. I believe that that is in your district, and so in addition to the 600 units that have been built really over the course of the last five years, I think we have another 500 or so units that are planned here in the short term. Some projects are under construction right now, so we have one of the most active counties in the state when it comes to providing housing for individuals who have behavioral health needs, and so really appreciate how active our department is and how active our Board is. Any other comments?
Yeah, one last one. It's also, there's some housing included in that Arthur project for those that are foster children that have been aged out at 18, so they're providing some housing for them as well there.
Yes, our units through the Behavioral Health Department are for the transition-age youth population, which includes those foster youth who are transitioning into adulthood. We know they're among our most vulnerable, and this apartment complex is geared toward them. It's in close proximity to City College, and also in close proximity to another program fully funded by the Department that's a supported education and employment program to help these young folks continue to address their mental health needs while also advancing their education and career.
They have a transportation setup there with the bus, with fax. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any additional comments? Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the report.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Carries unanimously.
We now move to the next item, item 12. Under Public Works and Planning, conduct first hearing to amend master schedule fees, changes, and recover costs ordinance by amending Sections 1,000 Computer Services Subsection 1,001, Section 1,500 Parks and Recreation Subsection 1,509, Section 2,200 Public Works Subsections 2203, 2207, 2208, and 2209. And Section 2,500 Development Services, waive reading of the ordinance in its entirety and set the second hearing for April 23, 2024, and designate County Council to prepare a fair and adequate summary of the proposed ordinance, and direct Clerk of the Board to post and publish required summary in accordance with Government Code Section 2,5124B1.
Morning, Chair Magzik, Board of Supervisors. I am Lemwell Asprek with the Department of Public Works and Planning. The item before you this morning updates the master schedule of fees for the Department of Public Works and Planning. The fees have been reviewed by the Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, and I'm available to answer questions you may have.
Any questions from Board members on this item? Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the Board for adoption. We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And that passes unanimously.
We now move to item number 13. Under Public Works and Planning, conduct first hearing to amend President County Ordinance Code Chapter 11.16, angle parking loading zones, Section 16.010, angle parking restrictions to reflect various changes to Ordinance Code as a result of a recent traffic study, waive first reading of the ordinance in its entirety, and set second hearing for May 7, 2024. Designate County Council to prepare a fair and adequate summary of proposed ordinance, and direct the Clerk of the Board to post and publish required summary in accordance with Government Code Section 2,5124B1.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board. Ryan Cardoza with the Department of Public Works and Planning. This item is the first hearing to amend the Fresno County Ordinance Code, Chapter 11.16, angle parking loading zones, Section 11.16.010, angle parking restrictions. The recommendation is based on a recent engineering and traffic study. In summary, this amendment will establish two existing locations on Oak Street in Corruthers for on-street angle parking, and establish two new locations on Tahoe Street in Corruthers for on-street angle parking. If approved, Council will prepare a summary of the proposed ordinance that will be published in the Fresno Business Journal prior to the second hearing on May 7, 2024. If approved on May 7, the proposed ordinance will go into effect after 30 days on June 6, 2024, and the new angle parking stalls are scheduled to be installed by mid-June. That concludes Staff's presentation. I'm available for questions.
Buddy, you have anything?
No. It just said that Tahoe is the same width all the way through. One into town, there is parallel parking. You know, right now, the other end, there isn't. So this would make the whole street the same.
Makes sense.
Is that about the...
Yeah, it'll be more consistent, add more parking instead of parallel.
All right. Any other comments from Board members?
Yeah.
Seeing none, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll... Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back for a motion.
Motion to approve.
First, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
We now move to item 14. Under the administrative office, authorize the Board of Supervisors to execute letters to federal delegates in appreciation of their support and work to secure funding for fiscal year 2024 community project requests.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. The item before you today will execute letters of appreciation to acknowledge the support from our federal legislative delegates in securing funding for the county's community project requests. The support from a delegation is critical to getting support for these projects and funding. Senator Padilla and Congressman Duarte were instrumental in making funding for the Cantua Creek sidewalk improvement and tranquility complete streets projects possible with the passage of the Transportation, Housing, and Urban Development Appropriations Bill that occurred March 9 of this year. These projects were funded at $2 million and $3 million respectively. I would also like to add, it would be remiss of myself to not take a moment to acknowledge the public works staff that works to develop these project plans and requests and preparing these submissions for our federal delegates. This concludes my comments, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments for Fine?
I would just say our federal delegates have done a good job in delivering resources to our community and would wholeheartedly support this item.
Thank you, Brian. Any other comments? I want to thank Fine as well as Sam. They are like a dynamic duo team. The amount of letters and legislation that the two of them keep up on is daunting at times. So appreciate you preparing this item, Fine. And I think this is the first time you've presented before this board officially as the lead. So well done. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for action. Shall we move?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you.
We now move to item number 15.
Under the administrative office, received presentation by the County Administrative Office regarding the Yosemite Area Regional Transportation System Highway 41 route, including possible membership options for the county and direct staff to take action as deemed necessary.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ed Hill, your chief operating officer. As requested, today we are presenting your board with information regarding the Yosemite Area Regional Transport System or Yarts Highway 41 Route. The requested information includes how the services work, how they are funded, and how they are governed. Yarts is a public transfer bus line based in Merced County and operated by a joint powers authority. The services are designed to provide fixed route transportation between Gateway Communities and the Yosemite National Park. The JPA board consists of two county supervisors from each of the member counties of Merced, Mariposa, Mono, and Tooele County and Madera, excuse me. Their main funding source consists of JPA membership dues, National Park Service funds, federal, state, and local funding, and funding from ridership ticket fees. Yarts operates multiple routes, but we are focusing only on the Highway 41 Route as this is the route that provides services in Fresno County. The map on screen shows the designated stops along the Highway 41 Route. In its current form, the route includes two stops in Fresno County, one at the Fresno-Yosemite International Airport and the Amtrak Station. The Highway 41 Route was originally established as a demonstration project in cooperation with the Fresno Council of Governments and was funded by a $2.6 million congestion mitigation and quality air grant. It was originally envisioned to provide year-round services, however, it was later modified with peak ridership interest and operates between the months of May and September, with only scheduled stops, as mentioned, at the airport and at the Fresno Amtrak Station. Since the route's inception, operating hours and ridership have varied considerably. Last year, there was a total of 6,185 riders, a decrease of 38.8%. This data includes all the stops along the route, not just the Fresno County stops. Because of these changes, the route was originally not going to operate in 2023, but was continued after last-minute funding provided by the city of Fresno. In its current form, the route runs two buses seven days a week. For the route to continue operation, one of two things needs to happen. Membership in the JPA with annual dues of $50,600 are covering the annual operating costs of $240,000 with an estimated $195 in operating costs and $45,000 for fuel. The JPA option is cheaper because it provides the opportunity to benefit from the operational economies of scale and the JPA other funds. Recent conversations with the Yarts and City of Fresno staff have explored multiple options for the route to continue. Today, we are presenting options that could include the county of Fresno, however, these are not the only options for the route to continue. One option is a county-only JPA membership. Under this option, the county would be the sole Fresno representative, and we would pay the annual $50,600 JPA membership dues and appoint two county supervisors to serve on the Yarts Board. Another option explored was a hybrid option, and under this option, both the city and county would split the Yarts Board seats as well as the, excuse me, annual JPA membership dues. And under this option, your board would appoint one county supervisor to sit alongside on the Yarts Board with a city council member. Finally, your board can recommend any other options you may want considered or have evaluated, which we would explore and bring back at a later date. This concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. And also, the executive director of Yarts, Stacy Guzman, is in attendance today. Should you have any questions for her?
Any questions for Ed?
Well, I think Supervisor Quintero asked for this item to come forward, so did it answer your question, Supervisor, or...
Yes, pretty much. But what I'd, and I did speak with both Paul and Ed over the week, the weekend. And basically, I think what it boiled down to as well is, is do we have the monies in our budget that you're going to be bringing forth? And number two, where would the money come from?
Sure, I can... Good morning. I can respond to that, Supervisor Quintero, and just share some preliminary thoughts, you know, from my perspective. Appreciate the services that Yarts provides, and my comments are nothing relating to that. But as you know, I mean, the county is anticipating a tougher budget year. We're still waiting for the impacts of the state deficit and what impact that will have on the county. With that uncertainty and potential significant cuts, I anticipate multiple agencies, in fact, some of them have already started coming to the county, asking for funding for some of the gaps that are going likely to be expected. As you know, the county, when it comes to transit, we receive a very limited amount of money. Most of that is in cooperation with the Fresno County Rural Transit Authority and in that fund. And as I'm sure the executive director there would share, it's not enough. And that is funded by state sales tax revenue, which is already declining. And so if you were to ask my recommendation at this point, it would be not to use county general fund dollars at this point or to join the JPA. However, in partnership with Yarts or other agencies, certainly looking for funding sources like were originally, whether it's a clean air grant or other funding that could support this, that may be something we can support and try to come back in the future. But I do not recommend funding this with our precious discretionary dollars, at least at this stage, until we know more about our county budget and the state budget impact is coming.
And part of our conversation as well was that the benefits that Fresno County would receive by going to Yosemite, we actually end up losing some dollars because we're going outside the county. And another thought was even to look at maybe shifting the routes to go to Kings Canyon and Sequoia National Parks. We talked a little bit about that because that way it benefits a lot of our cities within the council of governments and in Fresno County. And they might be, those cities might be a little bit more apt to participate in helping with some of the funding because that way they would benefit as well. And also, you have a route that goes through Sequoia and Kings Canyon from Tulare County? Is there...
That's not us. The city of Visalia. Can I...
That's, yeah.
Sorry, that's not Yarts. That's the Sequoia Shuttle, so it just...
Okay, but there is a shuttle that, okay. Yeah. So, I mean, there's different ways to look at it, and I know you're working on the budget right now, and you just feel that we're not in a position to get into funding. But I wanted to bring it out as an informational item for the other board members, and I'll just respect whatever wishes they are. I did get some calls from the community that kind of initiated this presentation, that were interested in continuing the route to Yosemite. So like I said, all respect, whatever the majority of the board decides.
Supervisor Brandau?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, all my questions were really answered with Supervisor Quintero's questions and Paul's responses, so thank you.
All right, very good. Then with that, since we have the executive director from Yarts here, I don't know if there's any additional information that you would like to add before I open it to the public?
Sure, I never can turn down a hot mic. So I'm Stacy Guzman. I'm the executive director for the Merced County Association of Governments, basically the Fresno COG equivalent in Merced County, and we administer Yarts. I appreciate the item today. I'm really glad that we're able to have this discussion. I would just add one comment is that all of our member agencies are counties at the moment, so as listed in the earlier presentation. So none of them are paying their dues out of their general fund. They are all contributing if I, unless something is changed in the coming fiscal year with local transportation, LTF, your local transportation funding, that would either be from the county's allocation of your LTF funds or in an arrangement with Fresno COG, which is how Merced County pays, Merced County contributes $300,000 to Yarts for those services. So there are transportation dollars related that could support this that would be outside of the general fund. In fact, I would say the general fund contribution would be definitely an unusual way to pay. So just want to add that for consideration, and thank you for your time today.
Yes, Sal.
One of the options we talked about, the three of us, was maybe looking at the federal budget once that would be approved to see if there's any monies through the Department of the Interior, which oversees the national parks. So I don't know if there would have any funding in that department for Fresno County. But it just doesn't seem like that's, that we can, basically, we can't afford it, is...
And if I could add to that, the National Park Service through the Department of Interior does provide about 40% of Yarts' budget already. So they do provide general, most of our general revenue or discretionary revenue does come from the Department of Interior, which is part of the funding that, as Ed had mentioned, when you join the JPA and you have that contribution of $50,000 and some change, it's a cheaper alternative than paying for the whole route because once you become a member of the JPA, we can apply those Department of Interior funds to the corridor costs.
Got it. Okay. Did you have something you wanted to add, maybe about LTF funding?
Yeah, just a comment. We do receive local transportation funding, and that is currently allocated, you know, to the resources. And keep in mind, at least in last year's budget, that funding was reduced because it's funded by, primarily by state sales tax, which is continuing to trend downward. So if we were to review that, it would be, you know, likely an impact to services that we already fund that are primarily in our rural areas, some of the bus routes in the city that are help with our social services clients with the city of Fresno. So that is the funding, so we do also have that funding within our budget as well.
Any additional comments from board members?
I think, Mr. Chairman, if it's the will of the board that we accept this more as an informational item and then see what the budgets are that come out on the federal funding and that type of thing, and see if there's any monies available. So if we accept this as an informational item, I think we can, with regards to our budget being the way it is, we're better off just waiting.
I have no problem with that. But since this, I think, was listed as an action item or having the potential, I'd like to open it up to the public. Are there members here from the public that want to comment specifically on this item?
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair and board members. I am Michael Rogers. I'm the assistant city manager for the city of Fresno. Thank you for taking this item up. This is an item that, from the city's perspective, we also understand the challenging economic times that we all face. This is an item that we would love to be able to partner with the county moving forward with an item like this, as the hybrid option is a potential option. The city does not put in general fund dollars for this, and so we utilize transportation funds as we move forward. But we would welcome the opportunity to look at and explore that hybrid option, if not now, in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, has the Fresno City Council voted on that hybrid, or have they taken up this issue?
No, no, not as of yet, no.
All right, thank you.
Seeing no further public comment, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board. Sal has stated that maybe we should not take any action today, receive this as kind of an informational item. I think that's a great idea. Seeing no motions to the contrary of that, I think we'll do just that. This will be a receive and file item. If things change at some point in the future or we're able to access some type of a grant, you know, bring something back to this board, but that'd be great. And we'll leave it in your hands as the CAO to be monitoring this situation. So thank you.
We now move to item number 16. Board of Supervisors, committee reports and comments.
Supervisor Pacheco, we're going to start with you. Nothing, okay?
Well, just when you thought all the New Years were over, there's a New Year celebration this weekend. The Cambodian community is celebrating their Cambodian New Years, and there'll be several events throughout Fresno County going on. So one of the bigger events for the community will be over at North and Chestnut Avenues, and it's a great event. They have a great, great community turnout, and I would encourage anyone to go and visit the Cambodian New Year, Chestnut and North Avenues. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor?
Yeah, I have a quick one. Last week, we had a special community meeting at Sierra Sport and Racket Club in my district. It was originally sponsored by Councilmember Carbossi. He invited myself and the sheriff to attend and also Chief Baldorama from Fresno PD. We've had a rash of break-ins in a couple of neighborhoods in that area, and there were probably 200 people in attendance for that community meeting, which in the scope of community meetings, that's a big, big community meeting. And it was great to have both local police and our sheriff's department there to reassure the citizens of those neighborhoods that they're doing everything they can do. But there was also a lot of recommendation that the neighborhoods kind of band together and find a way of communicating better with among themselves. And one of those was the Neighborhood Watch Program, which I talked about a little bit at that meeting. And so I think we've had eight or nine break-ins just since the first of the year in that certain area. And so the citizens are very concerned. And by having myself, not just myself, but the sheriff at that meeting, I think was really valuable. So they're all working together, and hopefully, there have been some arrests made, so we hope that that activity goes away. But usually, what happens is it'll just move from that neighborhood to an adjacent neighborhood or even maybe a different neighborhood in the city of Fresno. So we've got to really keep our eye on that, but I wanted to thank our sheriff for being there.
All right, thank you for that. And I've got a couple of quick items. Big hat days in Clovis took place this past weekend. The turnout was phenomenal, and the weather cooperated. So Saturday and Sunday were both beautiful days. I want to thank Supervisor Brandau, who was out helping to gather some signatures for Prop 47 reform. I was out there as well. Our district attorney, Lisa Smith Camp, was out there gathering signatures, and it's looking like enough signatures are going to be gathered for that to go on the ballot. Listening to the presentation from James Kuss, just about, we might have 12 different measures that could be on the ballot, and for the first time ever, we might have two ballots that are getting mailed out to people. It's going to be a complicated election cycle, but again, appreciate... Yeah, everything won't fit on one ballot, so it's going to be an interesting election cycle. Also coming up is the 110th Clovis Rodeo, which is going to begin the week of April the 22nd. I want to invite members out to the annual Clovis Rodeo Parade, which will take place on Saturday, April 27th. And two, I want to, again, just thank Supervisor Brandau, who at our last meeting had an item where he paid out of his own budget for Neighborhood Watch signs. Because of that action and the support of this board, I've received calls from members in some of my unincorporated communities I represent who too would like to see some of their old Neighborhood Watch signs replaced. So, maybe in the future, we can come up with some type of a process for replacing old signs and also printing signs because I believe it's an outside vendor right now that prints a lot of those signs and I would have no problem using my budget to pay for some of these replacement signs, which in some cases haven't been replaced in over 20 years. So, I think that would be great. Also got to attend the California Restaurant Association event last night, award ceremony for the Central Valley. Supervisor Quintero was there and Supervisor Brando were there. A lot of awards were handed out, it was held at Table Mountain and again, an amazing event where a lot of great people, some who've passed on and others who are still with us were recognized. So, just wanted to state that. So, with that, we'll move on to the next item.
Item number 17, Board Appointments.
Supervisor Brandau?
Yes. I have an appointment to a vacancy at the Planning Commission and I don't know if David is still here, but David Borchart was in the meeting earlier today and he is my appointment to fill the vacant District 2 seat for the Planning Commission.
Supervisor Mendez?
Two, I got a new appointment, Klinga here on Cemetery District, appoint Franco Pimentel. That term goes to, be the 3rd of January 28th and reappoint to the Washington Colony Cemetery District, Gailene Pritchard, Pelcher.
Very good. Supervisor Quintero?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got two appointments. One, I'd like to reappoint Gail Gaston to the Committee on the Status of Women and a new appointment to the Foster Care Standards and Oversight Committee is Patricia Scoville and that's all.
Supervisor Pacheco?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reappoint Eric Fontana to the Fresno West Side Mosquito Abatement District in the Board Member A position for a term ending January 3rd, 2028.
All right. And I have one to the Behavioral Health Board. I'd like to reappoint Dr. Elizabeth Kuz to the District 5 Public Interest Position and reappoint Manuel Pacino to the At-Large seat. With that, anyone in the public wishing to comment on any of the appointments we are about to make? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and entertain a motion to appoint those members. We have a motion by Supervisor Mendez, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Quintero, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Motion carries unanimously.
We now move to item number 18, Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the board on any matter not on this agenda.
Anyone in the public?
Good morning, Chairman, Fresno Board of Supervisors. I wanted to introduce myself to you and tell you quickly about who I am and what is important to me. Enough to take the day off without pay to speak with you now, about two truckloads of gas. So, my name is Tammy McMahon Gorans and I have been an educator since 1986. I retired in 2021, only to find myself very active in advocating to protect the innocence of our kids and continuing teaching in long-term positions since retiring. I've also been very involved in local educational concerns by speaking at school board meetings in Fresno and Clovis area and I also was a school board candidate for District Area 3 Fresno Unified for the 2022 election. I have access to groups across this nation I've networked with who vet books and have already graded them accordingly. I'm a huge asset to your new committee you are forming. I applied for the Parent Review Committee regarding our libraries. I reside in Supervisor Magzic's Area 5 and recently had the honor to introduce myself to him and I'm so grateful for that. I will never back down or away from protecting the innocence of our kids. Just one month ago, I had a student come up to me, needed to know the definition of a word on a page. On that page, the book entitled More Ghost Stories, I quickly read a story about a butcher who got angry at his wife, so angry he killed her. He proceeded to cut her up and put her in a meat grinder. This book is at a beginning fourth grade level. Never in my life did I think I would live during a time when it was controversial to protect our kids from content that's not good or age appropriate. Movies are rated, so why not books? Forget about banning books. I've seen many progressive folks ban classical literature over the years and call it discarding. I know what we're up against. I'm an educator, parent, grandparent, who's fighting here in California to save our kids. I know we're swimming upstream and I know the task is daunting. I'm retired, I'm ready and I'm unwavering in my convictions. And you might ask why? I refer to the starfish story, tons of starfish. Good, I'm looking at the seconds, I've got 36, okay. Tons of starfish were ashore from the beach and one person kept grabbing one at a time, throwing them back in the ocean while millions would perish. Someone asked that person, "Why are you doing such a foolish thing? It's useless, there's millions." The response was this, "I just saved that one and why I'm here. Please consider me for the position and I thank you for all that you do. Today's meeting has been just incredible, it's been great to be here. I thank you for your service and I thank you for your time. Thank you."
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm not a speaker, I'm just here on behalf of my son that I'm a caregiver for. For the last five years, he's had belly fever, meningitis, now cancer. He's numb from the feet down. He's barely 40 years old, has three children and can't help them at all. So, I stepped in as a mother for the last five years. Barely this year, I'm able to apply only because I didn't want to and we struggled and my husband and I struggled to make ends meet for my son. He's been in a hospital for these last years. He's really bad down where his legs are now, he can't even walk, so I'm taking over. And it's very important to help us get some type of raise on what we're getting, receiving now. I get his medication, I take him a bath, I feed him, I do everything for him. I'm from Reedley and I come all the way to Fresno for him. I pick him up, take him home, or I stay here with him. It's nonstop, he's very ill and it's very tiresome, but I will not give up, just as well as everybody else here who will not give up. I come to you in hopes that, you know, you hear our stories. This is the first time I'm doing this, I apologize if I'm not speaking well. But we do, we work hard every day. It's a 24-hour thing that we do and it is tiresome. Our minds are tired, we try to think and focus for the loved ones. And I just hope you could open all your hearts, everybody else that's in the committees, to hear our stories and hope that you can help us. It's been so hard, the gas is so high. My husband and I are surviving on potatoes and eggs and milk, basically, robed noodles. Girls, these are so sky-high now. I hope you hear me and, like I said, I'm not a great speaker, but I hope you do hear what comes from the heart. God bless you all and thank you again. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Arthur Diavola. I understand that the board has many issues to deal with. Healthcare for the elderly is not going to go away. If anything, it's going to get bigger. California is one of the most expensive states to live in. PG&E has raised its rates and now our water bill is proposing a pay raise. So, our proposal of $20 an hour is going back to pay our bills. If I can't take care of my mother, she will have to go to a retirement home, which charges $1,000 a day. Thank you.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Silvia.
Hi, good morning, my name is Sylvia.
Me va a interpretar porque no es ingles, sorry.
No, I'm going to be her interpreter, my name is Gloria Bernabe.
Yo le pido a Dios to tocar sus corazones. Habemos muchas personas que cuidamos, personas.
I ask God to touch your heart.
Que no son familiares míos, yo cuido dos, me dan tres horas por cada uno.
They're not our relatives, but we all, I take care of them.
Y me quitaron la seguridad médica y yo tengo problemas de cáncer y yo necesito pelar a sus corazones.
They took my healthcare away.
Que nos apoyen. Yo no quiero dejar de trabajar, yo quiero aportar a esta nación.
I want your support, I don't want you to take it away from us.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Olga Vaya. About a year ago, I came here and thanking you for the healthcare we have and that I don't, I wish that you don't take it away. And I'm here because my daughter again has to have surgery, brain surgery, because it came back. Again, I thank you for the health insurance we have and I am pleading with you that you help us keep it and keep our benefits. And I do, I do really want you to, to look at our benefits and come to terms. I'm on the negotiating team. And on our side, we have done a lot to come to terms with what, to see if we can come to an agreement. When we come to the table, on your part, you're coming back with just 10 cents, 10 cents. And we have gone to more than we should. We're not, we say we're asking for 20, we're not at 20 anymore. We've gone down so much and I don't think you realize. Well, I know we're numbers to you, I know that. I know you have to, your job is difficult because you have to allocate to so many, but you're talking about our lives, especially during the, especially when it comes down to our healthcare. My daughter's not the only one who has issues with brain tumor. There's other people who have cancer and so forth. We really need that because we should be able to work as many hours as we can. Either we work those hours or how do we pay our rent? I went to see how much I get, I would get on my retirement. Well, I make enough not to get help, assistance, but they will only give me $6 for my retirement for Social Security because I don't qualify. And that's fine, as long as I get as many hours as I can from IHSS so I can pay the bills. And I'm asking you to please really look at what you're sending to the table for us to negotiate. They're only sending 10 cents, 10 cents and it's not enough. Thank you.
Good morning, supervisors, thank you for having us. I'm Sue Hammond and I have spoke many times with you guys and talked to you about, you know, SBNS caregivers. I'm not here to tell my story today, I'm here on behalf of all my colleagues. This isn't really right for us not to be able to make $20 an hour and I'll tell you why. My husband and I watched a documentary yesterday and about the wages and how the cost of living has gone 40% up to where our wages haven't really moved in the way it should be. Actually, we should be making $24 an hour. All we're asking for is $20 an hour to be paid for the work that we do. We work hard. Our jobs are not easy. If you've ever been a caregiver, you would understand where I'm coming from. I've been doing this over 16 years. Now, my job right now, yes, I do take care of a family member who is my daughter's father-in-law. May not be as demanding as some of the other things that I have done, but it still is a demanding job. I'm going to be 70 years old at the end of this month and I had to come out of retirement to be able to help him so they could not put him in a care home, which would have cost a lot more money. I'm here today to ask that you would fund us and go ahead and keep our health insurance. Also, another thing too, I'm glad that I came today because this was sort of a last minute for me to listen to the lady that talked about the behavioral being passed, which I'm awesome, that was awesome, that Prop 1 got passed. We also deal with people that have behavioral issues and in order to keep them out of having to go into psychiatric homes or hospitals or care homes, us as caregivers, we do take care of people I have in my past. So, please, really consider funding us and passing our negotiation today. I thank you guys and God bless.
Seeing no further public comment, I will close the public portion. Appreciate all of your statements today, so thank you for being here. Yes.
I'd like to, I'd like to respond a little bit, but not directly. I want to ask our CAO a question. You know, Paul, every couple of weeks, we have a board meeting and the folks from IHSS come here and, you know, they talk about the healthcare component that they have and I know that not all of them are using the healthcare, a certain percentage of them have. Do those folks have any other resources to healthcare that the county would be involved in or, give me your thoughts on that? And then also, and I don't know if you're on the negotiating team, but have the folks that come here to the room every couple of weeks, do they, do they understand that, that healthcare component? That there are other options for them?
Good morning. So, the answer to that, I'm not on the negotiating team, but, and I don't know, there's some here who have identified that they are, but I do know that as part of that effort, the negotiating team has shared options available for the majority, maybe all of those who are currently getting healthcare through this benefit to receive either identical or close to identical healthcare through state programs that they would be eligible for, whether that be CoverCalifornia or Medi-Cal. So, I would just encourage those listening here today that we want to make sure that that factual information is out there. We've got individuals to share that information. There's been some press releases that share that information, but yes, that is shared as part of, that's my understanding, but I'm not part of that team. But it, my understanding is that.
Because I never hear in their responses that they've heard that information and of course, I can't communicate at this time because we're in some kind of, we're in a negotiation, right? And so, I just want to make sure that they're getting that information, that there's other options and if we were able to use other options, that would free up this money to give them a more direct raise across the board, everybody. So, anyway.
At least at the table, my understanding is absolutely yes.
Well, the negotiator might be hearing that information, but how about the rank and file, social worker who's helping our people?
Yeah, Mr. Supervisor, there have been presentations in the public of purely factual information regarding the options and I think you can find that on the DSS website. And I think that's been as announced.
And I think that's been as announced as we can make it while we're in negotiations with them, where we're limited to handle the negotiations through the negotiating table and not here at the board, which cannot negotiate with people live, you know, here. That's part of the unfairness of the situation, where we get to hear the real stories of people that they come, but we're limited by California law in terms of the type of response the board can make, because we could get accused of unfair labor practice by engaging with the people that come and tell us the stories.
Okay. So that information's presented?
Would act, yes. It's been available, whether the union presents that to their members or not is up to the...
What I was just wanting to know...
And I would just add quickly, I saw Sonia Bouquet has gotten up. She can also speak to our specifics, just on the facts of that as well.
Don't worry.
I just want to add, the Medi-Cal expansion that has actually happened as recently as January of this year is confusing. So people who were previously, prior to January 1 of 2024, who were previously eligible for, not eligible for Medi-Cal, now are. And we are actually working on a board briefing report and working on some additional information because it is, while it's publicly available and some of it was presented, it is complicated. Number of factors have changed that previously people who were not eligible to Medi-Cal now are. There's also the piece that county doesn't administer, but Cover California does when it comes to eligible, even for the individuals who, after all of these changes in rules that are not eligible for Medi-Cal, would be eligible for Cover California. Every single IHSS recipient, not a provider, but IHSS recipient is Medi-Cal eligible, their services, so this, the expansion actually will benefit some of the IHSS providers, but they're working individuals who on their own may or may not be eligible. The rule expansion for undocumented individuals has happened, the rule expansion on property, the rules of property, rule expansion on if you're, if you're a provider that lives with a recipient, that income won't count. So there will be number of individuals who previously were not eligible that now are. Medi-Cal rules are complex, fair enough, and I do think sometimes when we explain these things, they are confusing, so we're going to work on a board briefing report and some additional information to just explain for health coverage for individuals, what Medi-Cal expansions have happened on January 1, and then what's available through Cover California when it comes to healthcare coverage.
And so it sounds like that's going to be a future item that you'll bring back at some point, just information to our board?
Yes, it really is just informational when it comes to education and how people can access it.
And I need to be a little bit careful with how we're running the meeting now, because if we get too specific on an item that's not on the agenda, we're not going to take action, so I want to make that clear for the record. And so with that, we do need to move on to the next item, so I'm going to turn that back over to our clerk.
I'm sorry.
I can't, I can't.
We're really limited by state law in terms of... We can't engage with members outside of the bargaining table, and that's the way, that's the limit that the board has.
Mr. Chairman, there's no comments for closed session items. I would defer to County Council on closed session individual items.
On closed session, it's printed on the agenda. We have seven items. A lot of it is dealing with negotiations on properties. Is there anyone here to speak specific to the items we'll be taking up in closed session today? All right, not seeing any, I'm going to close the public portion, and are we going to need to come back after closed session, or can we adjourn following closed session?
Mr. Chairman, we do not expect any announcements of actions out of closed session, so if the board chooses, it can adjourn following closed session.
And I will entertain a motion to that effect.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will adjourn following closed session. Thank you all for being here.